I would like to call this meeting to order. Roll call. Chair Goleeb. Councilor Bragden. Councilor Danforth.
Here.
Councilor McEwen.
Here.
Councilor Pelletier.
Here.
Councilor Price.
Here. Guess I don't count. Here. Let it fall in alphabetical order.
If I can have a good stand.
I put the United States of America. And it's really probably the most famous one. In the middle of the world, we're never getting justice for all.
So first I'll have, I'll call for nominations for pro-chair Tam and the ads of the chair. Councilor Danforth.
I know the name, you just shout out, sorry.
I nominate Councilor Bragden.
Do we hear another nomination? There are no other nominations. Check it in. That Councilor Bragden. For pro-chair Tam. May have a vote. Roll call, y'all on first. A vote.
Yeah.
Thank you.
While you're adjusting to your new seat. This is in the absence of the chair. I'm going to just report.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda update Warren Totals, order number one, two twelve twenty twenty-two and number two fifteen twenty twenty-two. An additional order to nineteen twenty twenty-two. Looking for approval of the minutes for June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, public hearing for fiscal twenty twenty-three, the month that's full wastewater and school budget. And adoptions in the regular town council meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor McEwen, second by Councilor Pelletier. And go to a vote.
All those.
Any discussion of the council? Council, discussion from the public. Seeing none, all those approved. All opposed? Six zero. There are no special presentations for this meeting and moving into new business, town manager's report for today.
Greetings and congratulations on your temporary placement as council chair. I am zooming in from the Sugarloaf Mountain Hotel. I'm attending a professional development institute, three-day conference with the main town city managers association. So I'm thankful for the council allowing me the flexibility to zoom in and present my manager's report. Online this evening. So the report has been available for several days and I hope that folks have had an opportunity to read it thoroughly. I am going to go through it and take any comments or questions after. So one very exciting update I have to share is with the Veterans Park project through the community. Development block grant. That was received several years ago at this point. So as of Tuesday the ninth, Underwood Electric was back on site in Veterans Park to finish that project, put the finishing touches on it. That includes the actual light poles and overhead light fixtures themselves, as well as the upgraded electrical panel. They have been, they've been just tremendous to work with throughout the process. The only setback we experienced since hiring them was out of their control and it had to do with the lead times for several of the parts, given the supply chain issues that are being experienced worldwide. So in order, I just want to recap what that project was really briefly. So through the state of Maine, community development block grant funding, huge effort and huge thanks to Councilor McEwen for his extensive efforts in getting that off the ground initially. The town was able to hire Underwood Electric through Haley Ward. Haley Ward was the engineering firm that was overseeing the project. And we were able to upgrade the electrical service to Veterans Park. We were able to install additional outlets for use by vendors and others during community events. We were able to install overhead lighting throughout the park. And some really nice uplighting to light up the memorial at the top of the park. During that same time period, we were a benefactor of new trees through the canopy project. Those were planted along the walkway. Will bloom in and create some nice shade in that environment. And this has all come together very nicely to give our Veterans Park a really much-needed update, nice facelift. So very excited to see that work finishing. I've been out of town for a couple of days. I have not seen it. Completed myself, but I look forward to seeing that when I get home this weekend. So we also recently had the Public Works crew out in along Main Street in front of the municipal building. They helped us remove the neglected and overgrown bushes that were along the sidewalk. And that instantly provided some major improvement and was much easier on the eyes. They also pressure washed the Great Northern Paper, the GMP Park, Pocket Park between the municipal building and the Mr. Jackson's Building, the Gear Library, Oriole Theatre and Bakery, all housed right in that building. They were able to trim back the tree out front and several of the trees throughout the park to keep them away from the building and away from the awnings and windows. We're able to have Adam Lett from Wellat Electric come back to address the failed electrical outlets throughout that park. So we now have working electricity in that park again. And look forward to using that park more often for smaller events and, and you know, other things. We have some really creative ideas we're working on. You know, you've all seen the community free access pianos around, you know, maybe, maybe we can look at getting one of those down there for people like myself or Councilor McEwen to pop in, tickle the ivories for us once in a while. That was, the park, I think, is getting attention again, most recently with the installation of the bike service station through Outdoor Sports Institute. And the Gear Library. So I think that we're seeing a little more traffic into it and we want to make sure that, you know, we, we are accommodating and giving folks a nice place to do that. We have a, myself and my team, we have a very real sense of pride in our community and we certainly want to make sure that everything looks as nice and as welcoming as can be. So the temporary pool filtration system has been in place for a couple of weeks now and it's working great. I've had my kids there several times and can testify that the water looks just as good as ever. So, you know, many thanks to Mike's Pool Service for allowing us the use of that temporary setup. For the remainder, so that we're able to finish out our season and then, you know, as well to Jody Nelson, Rec Director and her staff for managing the additional work that is related to, you know, setting up and removing the temporary system each day. Certainly very, very well received. We do have funding for the replacement filtration system included on tonight's agenda. So we are pretty much looking forward to seeing how that goes later in the meeting. Several counselors and I participated in a meeting and presentation from our Kataden along with their partners from the Environmental Protection Agency, as well as Ransom Consulting, who is a consulting firm that assists our Kataden in the administration of those EPA funds. So we were able to, it was a public meeting. There was some limited attendance, unfortunately, but I know that the video, I believe, lives on their Facebook page, so I recommend anyone in our community who's curious about that work to log onto their page and take a look at that video. We were able to learn a great deal about what's going on with our Kataden at the One North site. We were able to get big picture and strategic updates. As to investments in being made into the site and, you know, as well as potential new tenants. So all very exciting things for our town and for our region. The EPA was there to speak about how the process works while redeveloping former industrial sites like ours. How it can take an exorbitant amount of money just to understand what needs to be done to prepare that property for future development and investment. You know, there's a common form of feedback from the community, you know, that our Kataden has one, you know, X amount of dollars, why isn't anything happening? Well, there's, there's actually quite a bit happening, but it's in the form of studying the land and preparing the land for the investment. It's a very extensive process. And again, you know, ransom consulting was there as well. They handle all the administration for our Kataden, you know, in accordance to the EPA guidelines. They're very complicated and the folks at our Kataden and of course, their partners with us, the town of Millinocket, we are all very, very grateful to have such a strong partnership with ransom as they are the, as well as, what is the, is there a problem with the audio, Diana? Oh, okay. Thanks for checking. So they, yeah, they are, they are the, you know, industry experts and we're very lucky to have them involved, makes, makes the project much smoother. To provide a couple of updates on our airport. After many discussions with multiple outfits. We have been able to arrange with WT Gardner to cut and clear approximately fifteen to twenty acres of airport land. They'll be doing this at no cost to the town and will be taking the trees to process them into chips. That work will take place in the late fall, once the ground hardens as not to, you know, run major equipment over the soft ground and, you know, tear it up and damage it. That will open more land for potential new leases and new hangars to be constructed over there at the airport. We already have several potential leases interested in building new hangars on those lots. The leases will add to airport revenue and help offset the cost of the operation of that facility. And the new hangars that would be built will provide new taxable personal property to be added to our tax rolls. So that's a, that's a win on multiple levels over there. We also recently received the official notice to proceed from the Northern Border Regional Commission. That means that the engineering and design work of our new airport terminal can begin. That is a great accomplishment. That was a very complicated ball of yarn to untangle after the project had changed hands several times. And I would really like to personally thank our community initiatives director Amber, our chairman, Mr. Goleeb, the NBRC staff, Patrick Santar at Cadiya Design Works and always Jeff Campell, our airport manager, for sticking with the process and answering many, many questions so that we can continue that project on to the next phase. Very excited to see that moving forward. We do have the community workshop coming up. It will be on August twenty-third. It is, it is on our interest in participating in the community resilience partnership. And this is the workshop that was previously scheduled in July, but had to be postponed. So we are excited to dive into that process finally. The location, unless there's been an update in the past twenty-four to forty-eight hours, is still to be determined, but we are making full advantage of our communication platforms to provide updates as we get more information on it. So there's, there's been some misconception of what this, what this partnership is and what this work entails. We are not joining a worldwide conspiracy, which has been brought up several times. But we are joining a partnership that allows us access to funding in the form of either two fifty thousand dollar max grants per year or one one hundred thousand dollar max grant per year. And those will follow the main won't wait guidelines when it comes to spending. I'm going to share my screen for a moment. I have to open my Zoom back up here. All right, can, can everybody see this? Yes. All right. So I want to go over some of these spending categories. So this is a multi-year effort. We can apply, like I said, either two separate fifty thousand dollar grants or one one hundred thousand dollar grant per year. And we can spend that money in these following ways. You know, for example, efficient transportation, that could be for electric government vehicles or public electric vehicle charging stations. It can be used for weatherization of government buildings or even homes within our community. It can be used for the installation of heat pumps in government buildings or for heat pumps in local businesses or for heat pumps in local homes. It is all to kind of help to reduce the town's overall carbon footprint and allow opportunity for us to invest in the, you know, the future and sustainability of our town. So this image specifically was sent out in our most recent email update on the event. And I believe is posted on our website, as well as some very similar information on our Facebook page. I certainly inspire anyone interested or curious to reach out to our community initiatives director. It is CID at millinocket.org. I'm going to put that in the chat very quickly. And Amber will be more than happy to have a conversation with you to explain that effort in more detail. All right, back to my original document here. I do have a couple of updates that were not included in the submitted form of my report, but I wanted to mention as an election update. So we obviously have an election coming up in November. We have had several people take out nomination papers. Gilda Stratton has taken papers and returned. Robert Higgins has taken papers and returned. Those are both for council seats. Another council nomination packet going out was for Jesse Dumey. That has not been returned. Jesse also has taken out the one-year school board nomination papers. Neither have been returned, I believe he is, he had to make a final decision there. And I wanted to make something very clear. And I, and it stems from recent conversation that, that was based on some frustration. I will not be signing anyone's nomination papers for council or for school board. And the reason for that is that I belong to the main town and city managers association. Main Town City Managers Association has a code of ethics. Tenant seven in the code of ethics is to refrain from political activity. And despite the fact that a signature on a nomination paper doesn't necessarily indicate political support for a candidate. It is still very strongly asked that, that managers refrain from doing this as members of the organization. So that being said, I respect all candidates, but will not be signing nomination papers. And I hope that those who have asked or may ask in the future, understand the reasons behind that. One other item I'm going to mention, given the potential candidates, is that where candidate, potential candidate Jesse Dumey is the brother of our town clerk, Diana. Diana will likely not be able to participate in the election at all from the moment those nomination papers are brought in. So Diana and I have already engaged in conversation and some, a little bit of strategic planning around how that might work. Utilizing some first staff who are seemingly willing to give this a shot. It is a, it is a a great amount of work and it will be a learning curve. So if we get in that situation, I'm going to proactively ask that our community members remain patient with us while we work through that potentially new process. And then lastly, we received a short notice request from the Webenaki Public Health and Wellness Group. We've been asked to support and potentially partner with three different grant funding initiatives that would take place in our community. And I'm going to read their requests from the email that myself and Councilor Goleeb had received. And afterwards, within your comments, I'm going to ask that the council provide a straw poll vote on whether or not I can sign these and return them. The first one is due by noon time tomorrow, so I'll need to act efficiently on that. The first is through the state of Maine's Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Community of Practice. That is through the Department of Economic and Community Development. Those funds are to support a group of local businesses or organizations to focus on empowering the leisure and hospitality industry in Millinocket. They hope to have quarterly in-person meetings at their property on the Rice Farm Road, the gathering place, as well as monthly virtual training, education and discussion meetings. And so an MOA is necessary for them to, for that opportunity. So we will need to let them know about that partnership. I certainly think it's a worthwhile discussion about that investment in our community. The second is through the National Endowment for the Arts. It is the Our Town Opportunity. This is a creative placemaking grant that supports projects that integrate arts, culture and design activities into efforts that strengthen communities by advancing local economic, physical or social outcomes. So we would need to submit a letter of commitment with that as well. The third is an opportunity through the United States Department of Agriculture. It is the Rural Placemaking Innovation Challenge. And that opportunity supports leaders from rural places in creating quality places where people will want to live, work, play and learn. Bring people together for, from various sectors and incorporate creativity as well as improvements to make vibrant public spaces. So I'll look forward to hearing some feedback on the report and the overall interest in supporting those three efforts on development and investment into our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm going to open it up to the council first and I will read the letter from Chairman Goleeb after. Any council comment? Councilor McEwen.
Thank you for all the updates. This is a really great report to read. Right off the bat, it was very pleasing to see that the improvements at the park, Veterans Park are wrapping up and just a huge thanks to everyone that's been involved in this process since the beginning. It's just going to be so great to see a safe lit park downtown and a beautiful one. Now, compared to years ago, even just a couple of years ago, it was, it's been fairly desolate. Thanks to everyone that's been involved. It's just so good to see. And the other little part, I will have to say, Mr. Manager, if an upright piano ends up down there, I would be more than happy to do some dueling blues with you down there. Not a problem at all. Town pool as well, another just great thing to see that we're able to keep that open and keep some professionals employed in the summer and a safe place for the public to enjoy swimming. Everything else on this report, very positive updates and I also support the grant initiatives, the letter of support for the Webenaki as well. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Councilor Pelletier.
Yes, thank you for the conference report and I also support the initiative by the grants.
Any other counselor comment? Councilor Danforth.
Chairman. Upgrades and the work at Veterans Park, that is very positive, that's very exciting and I will thank Councilor McEwen once again, because I know this has been years in the making and it was something two, three, four years ago. I think that you probably started this work and so it's really paid off. So I appreciate the work that you started and now we get to see completion. And also if Chairman Gole, Goleeb was here, I thank him for his leadership with the Canis B Project, the trees, they look really wonderful. As well, I also participated. Wait a minute, let me not jump ahead. The GMP. What happens when I write notes and then I skip over and then I have to back myself up, but the GMP Park, it, Park, it, Park. There we go, tongue twister. Looks very, very nice too. A lot of work is done there. I actually went back into some of my old records, some other public health work that I had done. And in two thousand and fifteen, we passed, the town passed a resolution to make our parks and some other areas tobacco-free and that's included. So I'm going to just ask that perhaps we may get some kind signage up there to say thank you for not smoking as part of that public health initiative just to add to that area. So when you do sing and dance down there, it's a very healthy environment. So I look forward to that. Town pool, that was great, great collaboration, great work. Rec Department, Mike Pool Service, be able to keep the pool continuing to operate. Weather-wise, we've needed that outlet for our. Weather wise, we've needed that outlet for our kids and our family. And so thank you so much, the extra effort the rec department, Jody and her crew did to, to make that happen. I also participated in some of the meetings that the manager spoke about with Architad and EPA and Ransom Consulting. That is very exciting. I know it, it seems very sort of mundane updates, talking about EPA, brownfields, that sort of thing. But I will tell you, Architad has done so much work and a phenomenal amount of money, grant funds that they've been able to secure to get the one Caton, I'm sorry, One North, I need to say that right, so other people will say that, but mill site, the old mill site, One North, ready for future tenants. So that's very exciting and I was glad that I participated and hopefully in the future, we'll get larger groups of people coming to hear the updates of what's happening there. Airport, again, more positive updates. There's a lot of work that's been done behind the scenes for several years and I know Jeff Campbell, our manager there, you've been plugging away forever at scenes. So it'll be good to see that sometimes progress gets dull, but then it starts again, you know, and so we're on our way there as far as great things happening in our airport. And we can look forward to economic development opportunities through the airport. So I appreciate that work. I'm glad also Peter, that you showed the little clip of what the community workshop is going to be because that community resilience partnership, partnership, that was confusing to know what that was all about. And so by you showing the opportunities that are going to come forward for us having that community meeting and engaging in that partnership, knowing that there's other grant opportunities, that's going to be exciting. Let's get some people there. Let's see what the community wants and how they want to, to move forward. And as far as I'm all for supporting the Webenaki Public Health and their work here, I just wanted clarification, use, use the word letter of support and letter of commitment in the grant world. Those are two things, letter of support. You know, you provide support for the project, commitment, you're committing something. So is there something in there that the municipality has to commit in order that we have to say that we're going to do in these letters of support? Or is it just, and is it a commitment or just a letter of support? Could you just explain that?
No, I have not had much time to really review those materials as I've been in professional development meetings for the better part of the last two days. I can pull them up. They did send the attachments. I can pull them up and try to skim through and verify quickly if you would prefer. It didn't, my perception was.
That's fine with me. And we can move on. And if you find something, you can share it. It just like sometimes if there's letters of commitment that were specifically saying, this might be deliverable on our end, we just need to be aware of that. But in general, yes, I'm in support of that. Thank you.
Any other council comment? Council Midor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I will echo the fact that I did go down. I haven't seen it at night, all lit up, but I have seen the new lamppost put up in the park along with the canopy work that's been done. It's really nice and kudos go to everybody that was involved in this right from the very beginning all the way through. I'm sure Council Stewart is probably getting tired of being patted on the back, but certainly. You know, everybody has been involved in this. I think it's been a very worthwhile project. Glad to see it finally coming to wish it's finally getting done. As far as GNP Park is concerned, I, I think it's about time we got that, that little park cleaned up a little bit. I'd even like to go ahead and go a little further and see if there was anything to do to offer lighting in that little outlet to be able, you not only use during the daytime, but also at nighttime. I, I think a light on town's building, municipal building, or perhaps standalone pole down there, I think would offer an awful lot to that area to light up that little cul-de-sac that's in there. So I, I would, I'd like to go a little further even with that. The, the temporary filtration system of the pool, I understand has been working very well up until about 2:30 this afternoon, where it's got a little cloudy on the bottom and they had to end up closing the pool. I know this only because my wife and my granddaughters were there and we're a little disappointed they had to leave early. But other than that, I, I was there yesterday with them and the pool was working great. Water was crystal clear, tad cold. I will tell you that as I got in, but crystal clear and it was good to see that kids were be able to utilize the pool. But yeah, there was a little, I don't know what the hiccup was today, but there was a little hiccup and I'm sure it was easily fixed. So. The EPA, Architad, a ransom meeting. Again, very informative. I, I wish more people were, had been there for the community to be able. I, we as the council or counselors that have been involved with this from the very beginning have a, an understanding of what's going on and why and the direction it's taking and what has been invested in. But I wish more of the community had been involved down there to be able to get an update and find out, yeah, is it, is it banging and banging of bells and whistles? For God's sake, go ahead and celebrate. No, but it's showing continued push forward on site that, like I say, I didn't realize until very recently, and I've been involved with this since the beginning, that had that site been declared a super fun site, we wouldn't be talking about this at all for decades by the time it would be able to get funding and everything cleared up. The fact that it was able to be qualified as a brownfield site, parts of it, really made a difference as far as the progress that could be happening on there and the amount of money that was involved trying to get the site ready for occupation. So it, like I say, a very informative meeting, very good information. I wish more people had been there, but I'm glad they had it. The airport, if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the airport manager, the clearing area, is that going to be the area on the taxiway that the town acquired from Architad? That, that is that the area that's going to be, the cutting is going to take place? Okay, is there going to be any other places other than that taxiway area that's going to be cut? And it mentioned in the report that there are some people who are already interested or have expressed interest. Do we have a number of how many people that have been interested as far as hangers to construct in that or wanting sites, truck hangers?
Seven.
Seven total? Wonderful.
Two of those are double sites. They want two lots each.
I, I think Jeff, they're going to want you to come up to the microphone so the people at home can.
Jeff Campbell Airport Manager, there are seven people interested on my list. I predict that we will probably end up with four of those people for sure, build hangers. And two of those people want double sites, double lots.
Really?
Yep.
Thank you very much. That's good news. And again, that will also provide revenue for the municipal airport to offset the budget.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Pry.
Only because he wasn't at the microphone and Council Midor asked the question. I, I just think for the first question that you asked in reference to the runway. So the public, it's on Zoom or did not hear that the answer was in the affirmative that it was along that runway.
It's going to be on the runway side of the lot going along Midway Road. From basically from down at the dump end or the transfer station end, all the way up to where the hangers are now. We're going to continue that line of hangers along there. There was a second question.
Yeah, well, I just, just for clarification, this also falls in line with the master plan for the airport to, when I asked him about the taxiway, there will be in future investment and renovation at the airport. There'll be a taxiway that will run parallel to that runway down that area, which will allow for the development of hangers along that area. That's why the, the acquisition of land from Architad for that purpose right there was so important to get.
When, when we did the taxiway or the parking apron and taxiway renovation about eight years ago, that taxiway, we have a taxiway that it's a dead end. It was, it was designed with future expansion in mind. So we will be connecting on to the end of that and continuing when we do our runway project. When we, when we work out, when we work on the runways, we're supposed to add a 500 foot extension onto that taxiway at the same time to provide access to people building hangers. Right. So they can access the airport.
And the other question was the fact, the, you know, how many people or how many were interested in pursuing along with.
My list has seven names and numbers on it.
Thank you very much. Moving right along here, I, the community workshop. I, I know the, the location is to be determined, but do we have Mr. Manager or anybody, do we have a, a time of day that this community workshop is going to be held?
Bear with me a moment, I can find it. I believe it's around dinnertime. There is some free food involved. And actually, in order to navigate my email, I'd like to address Council Danforth's question briefly, so I can close that window. If you don't mind, Council Midor.
Oh, we're ready.
All right. So the letter of commitment, Council Danforth, the section for the town of Millinocket says by signing this letter, we are committing to supporting open dialogue between Millinocket and the Webenaki Public Health and Wellness, participating in peer collaborator, participating as a peer collaborator. Basically in, in meetings, dedicating time for meetings and strategic planning, providing leadership through creation of partnerships in the community, sharing pertinent information and data that comply with the project and representing the needs of the Millinocket community. So my perception is not an exorbitant workload on that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Manager. That clarifies and it's just a commitment of time. And so I'm happy to give my time for that sort of effort. Thank you.
Okay. And for Council Midor's question. There is not a time on the most recent update sent out on our communication platform, but I assure you the next one will. I believe that we're shooting for 6:00 PM meeting. But I will confirm that early next week.
Thank you. The last thing on here is certainly I have really felt the appreciation for the efforts of the Webenaki within the municipality. And certainly I would have no problem with supporting the letters they're asking for. I, I can see this partnership going further and I think in the right direction, help the town of Millinocket as well as the Webenaki. So certainly I know we should actually take an actual straw poll, but I'm saying that I find no problem. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Council Midor. Before I go to my comments, I will read Chairman Golebe's email that he sent out. Unfortunately, he cannot. No, you sure? Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Not a problem. In reference, I'm not going to repeat what everybody else said, but I basically agree with all of what compliments to the work that's been done in Veterans Park, the adjacent park to the municipal building and, and the work at the pool, all of those things. And very encouraging. I do want to follow up a little bit on reference to the Our Cataden announcement and update. I would encourage every citizen of the town to go to the Our Cataden One North site and read the summary of the report of what has been accomplished and what the, where they are and the whole status of things. Because as Council Midor mentioned, it was very informative as to what they did. They had a a good sheet that they said they were going to post on their website that explained a lot of what's been done, how much money's been raised from various agencies and stuff and the type of work that's going forward. And they gave us an update on where Nautilus is, not speaking for Nautilus, but basically in relationship with the agreement with Our Cataden. Those types of things are very positive, hope break announcements there. And especially the, I appreciate the representative, the regional representative from the EPA of the Boston office being there, talking about the work that's been done. He mentioned that the Our Cataden has received six federal grants. And he said, that's unheard of, that six consecutive federal grants and trying to clean up this. And they're doing it across the state where there's the former paper industry. It's a very big focus with them of trying to get these communities back up and running. Very positive. The Ransom Consulting, I agree with the comments that the manager made in reference to their qualifications and the work that they're doing. There are some people, ransom, that have been in this area for a good 20 to 30 years. So they know the background and the experience of the area. And that's all positive, having these groups helping Our Cataden try to turn the mill site back into kind of the economic center of opportunities for the Cataden region. So please go to their website and look up their reports and stuff like that. I do have a couple of things that I want to raise that wasn't mentioned in the manager's report. And I've had conversations with the manager, but it does, I think, seriously affect the area. I'm sure you've all seen and read, and I forwarded to the council as the Vanguard Daily News article in reference to the main municipal, the municipal recycling committee that represents 115 communities in Northern Maine, including Millinocket. This is where we take our trash and all of they've contracted with Revere Capital, who Revere Capital have or are in discussion with a group called CS Solutions. CS Solution is an affiliate of Kate Street. I have expressed to MRC my opposition to anything that deals with Kate Street. I I'm rather adamant about that. I understand that MRC will be coming at our next meeting to make a presentation or to address any concerns that we may have. I have been in contact with a little bit less than a dozen of the other communities raising concerns about Kate, CS Solution. There's not a full disclosure as to their involvement. My understanding is their involvement is because they were successfully involved in a New Hampshire recycling project. But that's it. Anything that deals with Kate Street, I am suspect of. I, I think half of the, I think all of the community probably, vast majority of the community feels that way. The second question that I would have is to the manager, have you had any communications with the, the town's school department as to when we might have a completed presented budget, school budget?
I have heard that there is a corrected version of the budget. I have not received any information on when it will be presented to us. Plan to check.
My, my question was you've had no communications, correct? They have not communicated with you?
No, with the school board. I have had a conversation with the business manager who has been working on the budget and believes that it is I think, ready to be presented, but they need, they need to take their internal steps to, to prepare that to send it over to us. And I've not received that update, no.
And if I may ask the town clerk in reference to when we send that out, because we have to allow for absentee ballots, how many days do we have to allow before we put it to a vote to the townspeople after we pass it?
Technically, we only need to post a notice of election for seven days. It's in the consideration of, of the council if you want to allow more time for the absentee process with the concerns of current COVID.
Thank you. I'm finished.
Thank you, Council Pry. I'm going to read Chairman Golebe's email. He unfortunately couldn't be here with us tonight due to his flight being canceled. I sincerely apologize for my unplanned absence. I sincerely apologize for my unplanned absence from tonight's meeting, I have been on vacation for the past few weeks, which has greatly rejuvenated me, yet my connection flight. To Bangor got canceled last minute, and I was unfortunately rebooked on a flight that conflicts with tonight's council meeting. I'm looking forward to being back and seeing you all again soon, but in the meantime, I wanted to share my thoughts here. I fully support the Webenaki Public Health and their initiatives to bring grant money into the community, I appreciate their efforts and for reaching out to the town for these opportunities. They've currently proven to be welcoming and helpful partners, and I look forward to furthering our relationship with their organization. I'm sure Councilman McKeown isn't satisfied as I am, probably more to see the C D B G project come to a close and completion. I want to sincerely thank the manager, our community initiatives director, and the many others that have professionally and efficiently seen the project through to the end. It's clear, it's clearly been a project needing to be seen through for quite some time, I'm grateful to have Peter at the helm, along with his great team. Thank you to the public works and the manager for checking off yet another box of a long list to do items. In this case, improving and cleaning the G N P Pocket Park and Municipal Building, your sense of pride in the community is certainly evident, and it's so appreciated. I fully support all items on this agenda, in particular, the expenditures of the ARPA funds. We've gone through multiple public hearings and discussions and council meetings throughout the past year or two, concluded by a comprehensive survey, all, all in a great effort to engage with the public and ensure that we're applying for these funds to the appropriate community issues. I'm glad to see we're accomplishing that, of course, there are many more issues to be addressed, more than this lot of money can possibly achieve. But I am grateful to the council and to our administration for the, for the significant effort put into the transparent and cooperative process. Probably is no surprise to anyone here, I'm ecstatic to see that we are moving ahead with the airport terminal building engineering phase. This is such an exciting time for our town, we are very fortunate to have Jeff as the airport manager, such an inspiring. And competent local architecture forum to lead the project and to the, to the many partners. And organizations throughout the state who see the value of this project, thank you to Amber and Peter for seeing this project through as well, added to the list of fantastic work you're doing. I'm also super excited to finally get some acreage cleared at the airport to make way for new development, I'm looking forward for the town to finally secure lot leases to the handful of people. Who are looking to build new hangars, which spans our tax base and offers new opportunities to the community, thank you for another great report and to all the wonderful staff. Seriously, Chairman Goleeb. I'm going to go to public comment. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. And currently, I got the agenda for the school board. The discussion is for the sixteenth with a vote. At the same meeting. On the budget. And I have one request I made too late the last election. If an organization, whether it be the Chamber of Commerce. The Millinocket Library. An organization in Millinocket have a meet and greet of the candidates, please, for election. Some of us don't know everyone in town, and so if last time it was just. Videos, two minute videos, and that really doesn't tell you much, so just tossing that out there, please.
Mr. Manager, I see your hand raised.
Yes. Thank you, Sandy, for always coming and engaging in our readings, it's, it's, it's good to have that level of interaction, we. The, in, in partnership with the Milligan Memorial Library, our community initiatives director and the. Library Director Diana Furakawa are, to my knowledge, planning to do a meet, meet the candidates night, and will be. Circulating information around that in the, in the near future, as we get closer to the election. So I, I can assure you that a plan is in progress to provide that this year.
Any other public comment? Jesse.
Penn Somerset Street, Jesse Dumay. Yes, I also encourage candidates, something that I spoke to the manager about just briefly when I took out paperwork. candidacy for council, I think that public engagement with questions and answers always benefits, whether it's televised or people, people attending to. So that would be great to have as well, I just wanted to touch base, I know it's not on the manager's report, but the manager did mention it. Last time I ran, six, seven years ago for council, I thought it went seamlessly, I thought. Everything was great and professional, I just want to speak on behalf of the office where I've worked in the office as well, the clerk's office. That, that team of individuals is, is very professional, and they always dot their i's and cross their t's and. And Diana has always done very well, so I have no, I have no doubt that they will be safe, secure, and free and fair elections, Millinocket has a great track record of. I'm always. Setting the standard as far as like transparency and stuff like that, so when I, when I decided to take out papers again and was considering it. Did tell the manager a couple of months ago, and also Diana's office, my intent to, to run that way, they would be prepared and. Be able to make those adjustments, so I just want to, I know it's a burden, I'm saying this on behalf of. Or employee and the candidate running again, that I know it puts a burden on the staff a little bit, sorry. But. I have no doubt that they're capable and competent enough of running this out, and thank you very much for finishing, better than part looks great, and I remember when, when that task was started. And I can't wait to have another Trail Zen Festival, because I am three year running Chili Cook Off Champion. And I still get the trophy.
Chili Cook Off coming back again, so get ready.
Thank you for doing your due diligence and making that known to the council and the public, it's really appreciated, any other public comments? Jeff?
Jeff Campbell Airport Manager, just to expand a little bit on the, the leases and so forth at the airport, I think. The handful of leases that we have signed for or tentatively spoken for is just the beginning of it. We've never had the opportunity to expand over there at all, there's always been a great interest in hangars, but we have not been able to produce any because we were landlocked. I think that having these people sign on the dotted line that they would like to do this is just the beginning, I mean, they didn't know if we were going to be able to do this or not. So if we are able to do this, I am in. Complete belief that we will expand beyond that, if it starts at six, we get four, we could end up with ten or twelve. And that would be great, because at this time, we only have five hangars over there, and that's all we've ever had, besides the little one that was through the fence. Five hangars is all, as far as we could go, and they're all full. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and of course, you hear me say it all the time, but thank you for all your hard work, it's really appreciated, any other public comment, anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, back to the council. Straw poll, Mr. Manager, it looks like the majority is in favor of doing the commitment and the letter of support, if I'm not mistaken.
I'd still ask for. Yeah, I'd still ask for the initial vote as far as, it's an unofficial vote, but.
Straw poll of those who are in favor.
Mr. Chairman. Probably due to my hearing, I didn't hear the whole presentation on that, I would like to see the, the verbiage. Just to let you know, I'm supportive of, of moving it forward, but I, I need to see the wording.
Absolutely, all those opposed? Saying that, I think you're good to move forward, Mr. Manager. My comments, I'm going to keep them short and sweet, I share very similar comment, concerns as Counselor Pry does, me and him have spoken briefly as me and Counselor Mador. I'm curious to see what comes out of the meeting we have with Revere. But I also share very similar concerns. As to the municipal building, it looks great, loved seeing those bushes come out, as you know, Mr. Manager, I complain about those points sometimes. But again, thank you for, for the hard work of public works. Thank you to Mike's full service, I'm so happy that the temporary fix worked. Assuming that all goes well after today, but I really, really appreciate all the work that he's done. The EPA meeting with Our Caton and One North went extremely well, it was great to meet the faces in the background that you don't get to see every day. It, it was an awesome meeting, and I encourage anybody to, to pick up the phone and call all one of us that went to that meeting, if you have any questions, or go online and, and go to their site and, and watch the video of that meeting, it, it was a fantastic meeting, and as Counselor Mador said and Counselor Pry said, they are six for six on their. On their grants, and they have some really big ones in the works that they, they talked about, so I encourage everybody to go watch that meeting. Other than that, moving on to new business, assuming there's no other comments.
Oh, you're wrong.
Counselor Mador.
Since Counselor Pry opened the door, I was not going to say anything, but since Counselor Pry opened the door as far as. Our discussions with the M R C hopefully coming up next meeting. I share a, a great deal of counsel preparation, matter of fact, I even go further, I would, if, if. Any. Company with any affiliation with. Is involved with the M R C and this project restarted back up, I would ask the council at the time, air that I will ask for a vote to move to Burke. I will not let this down through another Kate Street debacle, whether it's directly or indirectly. Evolving the town of Millinocket. We've been through enough, and I don't see any. I, I don't see how any. Offshoot or subsidiary of, of the company will be any better than. I think, that is my opinion. I also. Will ask that the. The workshop meeting, obviously, is that going to be the community workshop, is that going to be zoomed also for. For everyone to be able to participate in that as well?
Depending on the location. We, we certainly hope to be able to offer it on Zoom as well, that was the goal, or that was the plan initially, and. You know, we hope to be able to provide that access as well, depending on the final decision on location, but it is a factor that we're looking into on selecting the. Location.
Thank you, also, the other part of that I wanted to ask was going to be, since it was brought up that the, about having a candidate tonight or a meet and greet. Is that also in the plans to be zoomed, whether that's from, at the, I think. Having that zoomed as well would be beneficial to the community to get to know the candidates who may not be able to get out, actually shake hands or be present physically.
Sure, and, and Counselor Mador, I'm not involved directly with the planning of that, but. I will share that feedback, I think it's safe to say that. The Zoom access to meetings is, is the new standard, so I think that that's kind of in the, in the. In the minds of all that are planning these sorts of things at this point, so I, I would. I would anticipate that that will be accessible by Zoom as well.
And the last thing, while I share. Citizen Dumay's. Accolades for the staff that we have in elections and things, I would ask Mr. Manager, could we get in a, an opinion about, from the Main Municipal Association? On possibly an exemption so that. Our town clerk could work the election, even though she has a family member that would be running. I find that this is going to be a gubernatorial election, I think it's going to be a big turnout of people, I think there's going to be a lot going on in this election, and I certainly would not be opposed to having our. Town clerk, who has the experience, the knowledge that she has going forward on this election, to be able to, be able to participate, even though there's a, a, a family. Member in the election itself, I just find that would be, I, I, I'm not asking for anything other than getting a, a. Legal opinion from a municipal association as to whether or not there could be an exemption for her to participate.
We, we can certainly pose the question, there is a, a lot of black and white. Very bluntly, clearly stated that it is not allowed, Diana was. Very helpful in providing that research and highlighted material to me just a few days ago. I don't see it being possible, but you know, we can certainly pose the question. If, is of your interest.
Thank you, I'm all set. Any other counsel, counsel, right?
Mr. Chairman. I, just following up, I, I agree with Counselor Mador in reference to, I think the town should make available our streaming and. Our Zoom services to inform the public, we're trying to get more and more people to attend the meetings. If visual, if not in person, and I think any way we can help in any candidate race, not only for the council and the school board, but up and down the ticket of people that are running. And that, and I agree with the. Sandra in reference to her points that it's beneficial to the citizens of town, just to have that opportunity to hear directly from people who are running. For office and what their understanding of the position is and what they're proposing to do for. And give them an opportunity to address those individuals if they have questions, I think it's a very positive. Effort, and I don't think it favors the council, though none of us, I believe, are running for reelection unless. Counselor Cody has changed his mind and seen the wisdom of being here, but, which he says he has not. But, but I do think that it's important to the, to the citizens of this town, because a lot of things are happening, and it's going to be an important. These are important seats to fill here and on the school board, thank you.
Any other comments?
I apologize, I try to keep this all brief so I can get home and have dinner, but in reference to, to the M R C and, and it's. I'm opposed to Kate Street. But my understanding and what I have asked of Karen Chus, the president of M R C, is to find out what the affiliation and relationship and restrictions of what services C S Solutions are providing. If it's the operation and they have no way of indebted the organization or have access to the cash flow, I'm not necessarily ruling it out until I know more about it, but I want to be fully informed, because I want them under a microscope. Thank you.
Any other counsel comments? Seeing none, again, I share the same concern as you both, and I'm interested to see how the next meeting goes. Moving on to new, new business, Counselor Pry, can I have you read order number two twelve, twenty twenty two, please?
Order number two twelve dash twenty twenty two, providing for the execution of the prior year's town warrant for August eleventh, twenty twenty two, it is ordered that the town warrant for August eleventh, twenty twenty two, in the amount of ninety five thousand. Eight hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety seven cents is hereby approved.
Motion by Counselor Pry, second by Counselor Mador, heavy hitters.
Heavy hitters is twenty four thousand seventy four dollars and fifty cents to Bernstein Shore Sawyer Nelson, that's the law firm. Dealing with a discussion with the Brookfield Power and the assessment, also seventy thousand dollar pass through to Twin Pines Snowmobile Club. For Trail Services, which is a pass through.
Thank you, any counsel comment? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six to zero. Counselor Palateer, can I have you read order number two thirteen dash twenty twenty two?
Order two thirteen dash twenty twenty two, providing for execution of prior year wastewater for, for August eleven, twenty twenty two. Is ordered a wastewater warrant for August eleven, twenty twenty two. Amount of one thousand eight cents.
Motion by Counselor Palateer, second by Counselor Mador, heavy hitters. Any counsel comment? Seeing none, any. Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, zero. Counselor Craig, can I have you read order number two fourteen dash twenty?
Order two fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the town warrant for August eleventh twenty twenty-two. It is ordered the town warrant for August eleventh twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-five cents is hereby approved.
Second. Motion by Counselor Prey, second by Counselor Mador, heavy hitters.
No, I oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm getting a little late in the day and I feel felt that we could use a little humor on the near half a million dollars there. Um, there's um eighteen thousand and thirty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents to Accent Aviation Group, uh, dealing with um uh, the airport. Um, two thousand ten dollars and fifty-five cents to the American Highway Product LTC uh that uh was doing uh public works, paving and some construction, one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents to benefit Internet Corporation, which is the telephone system for the various departments, uh, four thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars, eighty-five cents to Dead River Fuel. Uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars to Design Lab, fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, twenty-six cents to Dice Heart Services. Uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and nine cents to Freightliner of Maine. Uh, doing it, dealing, doing, doing some work on some vehicles. Um, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and ninety-three cents to Maine Technology Group. Uh, computers, thirty-four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty cents to Maine Water Company. Um, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars to Penobscot County Treasury, county taxes. Uh, three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to Sargent Corporation, uh, additional uh coal pack on on roads, streets, uh, two thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety cents to Mike Shalinski uh pool uh supplies. Uh, that's the big ones.
Any counsel comment? Seeing none, public comment? Yeah.
Jeff Campbell Airport Manager, the eighteen thousands uh in regards to the airport is for F gas. I am selling gas, even though the prices are high and there's going to be one on the next warrant for jet fuel because I've sold all the jet fuel.
That's awesome. Any other public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, zero. Counselor Palatier, can I have you read order number two fifteen dash twenty twenty-two?
Order fifteen dash twenty twenty, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for August eleventh twenty twenty. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for August eleventh twenty twenty to win out of six thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars, nine hereby approved.
Second. Motion by Counselor Palatier, second by Counselor Mador. Any heavy hitters on this one?
Thousand nine forty-six thousand stone rocket. Thank you.
Any counsel comment? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Six, zero. Counselor Mador, can I have you read order number two sixteen dash twenty twenty-two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number two sixteen dash twenty twenty-two, providing for update to paused funding for Esser free grant spending. Whereas order number one thirty-two dash twenty twenty-two paused the funding of Esser free grant expenditures and require council approval for any such expenditures during this period. And whereas the school administration is seeking approval for payroll for training on a new medical related program, therefore is ordered that the Esser free grant expenditures of approximately four hundred and ten dollars approved to cover payroll expenses for the training on a new medical related program.
Second. Motion by Counselor Mador, second by Counselor McKeon. Any counsel comment? Seeing none, any public comment? Seeing
Mr. Chairman. If I could, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I assume going forward on these on these Esser funds that we're going to do this on a case by case basis. Is that my understanding now? Or is this a situation where we could, uh, the council could uh revisit this uh it's uh pausing or freeze on Esser expenditures for the the school uh at some date. Is this, I I'm just trying to get a clarification of how this is going to work going forward. Is everything going to have to be an expenditure that, you know, come to the council, get it approved, move forward? Or are we looking at eventually somewhere down the line where we get a little bit of a more clarification for the the town treasurer and that to unfreeze these funds and move forward that way?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
In in response to Counselor Mador, um, as you may all recall, part of this is from the uh concerns that was raised by the treasurer in reference to how the uh our reserve accounts were being impacted, not knowing what the uh state return policy had had being fully developed as to what that lapse was and we could possibly go below what the auditors had recommended that we have there. I think until we hear some assurances from the treasurer, we should continue doing it item by item. Uh, the school system should clearly understand that the there's so many projects that they can do at one time. They have another year to spend this money, this uh and uh, or to to do fund these projects. And I just think it would be fiscally responsible until we know what the turnaround time on getting those monies back in, that we have control, some degree of control over how that those funds are going out and being returned personally.
It would, it's just a, I'm just going ahead and trying to get a clarification in my own head. Uh, I knew that we had paused the funds uh until such time as one, we got an opportunity to get uh a notice on timeline for reimbursement of any expenditures that or any projects that were done. And two, to go ahead and see that the uh the Esser funds were going to be uh done out for projects moving forward uh in a timely fashion. I I I haven't heard anything from the town treasurer as to, I I wish we had an update from the treasurer as to where we are on reimbursement is concerned moving forward now. And also, uh, like I say, I just, I'm not trying to push the issue as far as releasing the Esser funds to uh any, you know, to open the floodgates. I I agree that for time being, we go case by case until the reimbursement questions are answered and we start getting return on them. I just was looking for a clarification of was this a temporary or was this a permanent situation as far as the council action on these funds being paused?
Mr. Manager, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. Um, I don't think we're prepared to have this conversation at the moment, uh, but what I will add is that yes, the understanding right now is that it will be brought forward as a case by case scenario um, in its current state. Um, the second point is there was a second point, I promise. The it's a lot of talking, a lot of questions. No, so um, they, we have received the first reimbursement uh from the spending uh from this grant from the state. Uh, so there is, that was a sizable chunk that that came back uh just very recently. Um, and the third point I wanted to bring up is that we are exploring options to um, move that dedicated funding outside of our fund balance um and um, give it a different form, uh, but that is not ready for detailed discussion um yet. But we will look to provide a better update on that um on the twenty-fifth.
Counselor Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I never considered it to be a pause. It was for them to come to us so we'd would know how much of that money was being committed at one time in case we needed to put a pause on them proceeding with additional requests. Um, because each of those projects had a from some small accounts to a rather large expenditures. And if too many of them were going forward at the same time, we could have fallen below where we should have been in having reserves available for an emergency situation. So and and I I understand that's kind of a battle of semantics as to a pause, it was never a stop, that just come and tell us what you're asking for so we know where we are in the overall commitment of our funds that that the town is responsible for.
Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six, zero. Counselor McKeon, can I have you read order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty-two?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number two seventeen dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of the amendment to the town manager, to town manager employment agreement. It is ordered as follows, amendment to employment agreement, whereas the town of Millinocket, Maine, the municipal corporation.
Mr. Chairman, I move that he dispense with further reading of the where auses, where as this and go to the now therefore.
I would highly suggest that we have this read for the public and those that are listening so they can actually, I agree.
I withdraw. Motion.
Continue, please. Thank you. I appreciate the less than less than my talking through this, but uh, a municipal corporation here in after called town as party of the first and Peter Jameson here in after called manager as party of the second part entered into employment agreement for December of twenty twenty-one. Whereas the manager commenced his employment with town of Millinocket on January third, twenty twenty-two. Whereas section twelve of the employment agreement requires manager to reside within the town of Millinocket. Whereas the town of Millinocket and the manager mutually agree that the manager does not have to reside within the town of Millinocket. Now, therefore, for good and valuable consideration, the receipt of which is hereby acknowledged, the town of Millinocket and the manager agree to strike section twelve from the employment agreement so that is no longer has any force or effect. All other terms, conditions and obligations of the employment agreement shall continue unmodified. In witness thereof, the town of Millinocket has caused this agreement to be signed and executed in its behalf by the chairman of its town council and duly attested by the town clerk and the manager has signed and executed this agreement both in duplicate the day and year first written below.
Okay. Motion by Counselor McKeon, second by Counselor Palatier. Any counsel comment? Counselor Craig.
Mr. Chairman, just so that people understand, uh, we have had a number of department heads uh and former town managers who have not been required to reside here. So this is really going back to a former practice that the uh town currently has with some individuals who are employed by the town and uh depart, including department heads uh as well as previous managers. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, again, oh, Counselor McKeon.
I would like to say, even though I will be supporting this order tonight, I think it's extremely important for having the town manager residing in Millinocket. Um, even though we may be striking this tonight, um, I would encourage if this order is passed that the town manager does not um let this impede on his positive success that's already occurred within the community. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Counselor Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is, and Counselor Prey is right. It past practices, uh, we've had uh, department heads, uh, town managers and the like not reside within the town of Millinocket. And it has is always, the the argument has always been that there's a there's a disconnect because they're not available for public functions or being seen in the community or whatever. But I I really don't think that it's an impediment at all to allow the town manager uh not reside within the confines of the town. I think more and more, you're going to find that uh people are working remotely from home. Uh, there are people who are working in one community and living in another, people who are living in an unorganized territory but working so I see nothing uh that would go ahead and cause me to have an alarm or anything on this. Uh, I think it's fairly straightforward and simple and it's it's an easy thing that to do to facilitate the manager being able to reside where he should be. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Seeing counsel at end for it.
Is it working? Thank you. Finally, um, it's been a struggle tonight. Um, but I I too will um approve this order and initially, I know when we were doing our manager search, I really wanted to make sure we had a manager that resides. That we had a manager that resided in the community. Um, we were lucky enough to hire, you know, an individual that had deep roots in the community, was from here, is from here, will always be from here, even if he doesn't leave and commute into town. I guess I'm just very comfortable at this um juncture that because of Peter um knows our community and has done so well that he can make this work and we can make this work. And as Counselor Mador, you know, times have changed and as far as being able to be connected um virtually um through the world of Zoom and some different meetings, you don't have to be present all the time. I do believe he will have the right mix, will find the right mix of being present. We're not going to lose him. He's still going to be present with us. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, um, Mr. Manager, I want to thank you for everything you do as we've constantly said over the weeks and months. Um, I definitely agree that we've had this as a past practice and I think it's suitable for you. I think the comments that you made in prior meetings have suggested that you will always be a part of this community. Um, so I have no opposition to this this amendment. Any other counsel comment?
And for just a moment. Yeah, wanted to reassure everyone that it is not in my plan to remove myself from this position or my dedication to the community. However, having the ability to separate my professional life with my personal life and my family life um are extremely important to me and to my family. Um, it is become seemingly impossible to have a personal life or a family life. Living in the town that I manage, however, um, it is very common for town managers to live in one community and manage in a different community uh for, you know, that very reason. Um, so while I continue to support the community and work to the best of my ability to move the community forward, uh, my, you know, intent is to work in this community and potentially live in a different community um so that I do have that healthy separation of work, life, personal life and family life. So I appreciate this consideration. Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor.
Sorry, soon as I was going to speak, my children run out. Isn't that how it goes? Um, go on in, Stephanie Jameson, fourteen, Rush Boulevard. Um, just wanted to also add that um, you know, personal reasons aside, I also work. Um, and I don't work in Millinocket. I actually work out of Bangor, but I'm all over the state. And so this will, um, not that it's all about me, but this will make things a lot easier for me. Um, because right now I'm the person who's who's traveling more for work. Um, and like Jane said, no matter what we do, this is where we are from. And um, we love this town, so we're gonna keep showing up. Um, Peter's office is still in Millinocket, so just wanted to to throw that out there. I appreciate that you're having this conversation because it it makes a difference for our family. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other public comment? Back to the council, all those in favor? Six, zero. Counselor Mador can have you read order number two eighteen dash twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two eighteen dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order two eighteen dash twenty twenty two, providing for approval of spend American Rescue Plan Act funding. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council approve the use of one hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty dollars of ARPA funds, funding for the following expense: placement of pool filtration system, eighty-nine thousand dollars; Little Italy playground fence, twelve thousand two hundred dollars; town employee COVID pandemic stipend, thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars; mobilized Katadon community heating fuel assistance donation, fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Mador, and second by Counselor Danforth. Any counsel comment? Counselor Mador.
Thank you. I personally have been trying to get the, the ARPA funds used in the community for either infrastructure or whatever. I think that this set of expenditures is a good cross referencing to the needs of the community. Not only does it go ahead and take care of an immediate need, which is filtration system of the pool, it takes to the safety issue in Little Italy playground with the fencing that is falling down and is, is, in my opinion, dangerous, kids playing around it. The employee stipend, I think, for the pandemic has been needed or, or should have been done long ago. I find that their, their commitment to the community during the pandemic and their ability to work during it was exceptional. We have an exceptional group of people that work for the town, whether it be fire, ambulance, police, public works, our people in the municipal building, our office staff, they certainly deserve a, a thank you in the form of compensation. And the last part of this, which I tell you the truth, I am so happy to see this, is the donation for fuel assistance to mobilize Katadon. I think this is going to be a hard winter for a lot of people. And I think that this is a shot in the arm showing that the town of Millinocket cares about its citizenship. And I believe that this is a great spending, spending these funds right now, in a time before the holidays, so, I mean, before the cold weather starts to hit, so it's available. I am ecstatic about these, this combination. Plus, at a hundred eighty-four thousand, four fifty, this is not the total expenditure of what we were given this year. So there is some wiggle room for other things to happen out of this ARPA funds. This is a great jumping off point. I fully support this, and I'm glad to see it come up this way. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other counsel comment? Counselor McCann.
Just to echo, just to echo, where this is touching several areas, not only in-house, but externally, safety, and security. So I will be supporting this as well.
Counselor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I can't believe I'm saying this, but I agree wholeheartedly with every single word that Counselor Mador said. For the record, I do, I do just want to ask, just the wording around mobilized Katadon, community heating fuel assistance donation, is there some wiggle room? I just know that the work, great work that they do, that word fuel, for some folks, that could be a cord of wood, it could be pellets, they could be heat by electricity, that sort of thing. I just want to make sure that mobilized Katadon has that flexibility and the meaning, the true meaning behind that. But I support it wholeheartedly as well.
Counselor Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I've had conversations with Counselor Danforth on particularly the mobilized Katadon, on the community heating, and as I had brought at a previous meeting, because mobilized Katadon serves more than a dozen communities, or so forth, in reference to that. These are Millinocket funds. I don't know what other communities are giving, but I have been assured that these are funds for people in the Millinocket community, because they're our ARPA funds. And that's not to say that I hope that mobilized Katadon is able to raise money from other communities, and other sources to, to assist in helping people. Because we all, we are the economic center. We're kind of the communities of the Katadon region. We're probably shared a little bit with Lincoln and Holton from those communities, but it is an important thing to keep these people secure during the winter months, particularly Farmer's Almanack thing, it's going to be a very cold winter. And they say we might even get a little bit more snow than normal, but it's the cold that's the concern. In reference to the other expenditures there, as Counselor Mador pointed out, that these are things that are improving the community for the town as an overall place to live, and providing quality services. And particularly to the town employees, the town office had limited hours and restricted access somewhat. All employees worked, they answered the calls of citizens coming in. They were there throughout the pandemic. So accolades to them, their commitment to the community and whatnot. I've had a couple of citizens ask me some questions about it. But I think to some degree, this, you can always go to a point of nitpicking all as to how we do that. And as Counselor Mador pointed out, there's a little bit under sixty thousand, I think around fifty-seven thousand dollars left of other fundings that we can do as things come forward that would benefit the community or special, particular special interests. So I want to applaud the recommendations for the council to approve this. Thank you.
Any other counsel comment? Counselor Mador.
Yeah, I just, for what Counselor Danforth mentioned, was the, I, I think heating fuel assistance. I think that that, basically, in that sense, is a broad scope that could cover different parts of, different types of heating sys, you know, systems, whether it be pellets, you know, wood, oil, whatever, propane. So I find that that part, that little word right in there, I think could encompass the fact that we could go ahead and have a more of a broad assistance. So I think I'm fine with the language that's there, but I appreciate the fact that she brought it up, because I think it's, it could be something that needs clarification.
Any other counsel comment? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to add to a couple of points that were made about the total funding itself. So this is a little less than half of the total that we have for American Rescue Act funding. The combined total of the two payments which we have received, I believe the second payment, the combined total is closer to, I want to say, four hundred and forty thousand between the two years. So this is a little less than half. So we do have plenty left to do great things within our community. So just some further clarification on that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I want to start off by saying that not all heroes wear capes. And town employees are one of those heroes. Through the entire COVID pandemic, everybody in their own way was, was working, staying open, and making sure that the public was attended to, including the fire department, EMS, and police service. So thank you to all of you for all the hard work that you guys do. And this is definitely deserved across the board. Thank you to the citizens that brought the concerns of Little Italy Playground, and for Mike's full service, and all the work that, that's your manager that you've done for, for finding us funding for the pool filtration system. Opening it up for public comment, is there any?
Hi, Sandy Sullivan, one oh four Sunset Drive. Every one of you have said employees of the town. To my knowledge, we do not employ any police officers, and yet they're included in this. They are employed by the town of East Millinocket. And if any money comes from these funds, I feel that it should come from East Millinocket, not from Millinocket. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Oh, Mr. Manager.
I, I would like to respond to that if I could. This, the, this, the budget that this total was based off of, that does include police department, is based off the fact that during the beginning and the most intense times of the pandemic, Millinocket did have a police department. And the officers listed within there are officers who worked full-time throughout the entirety of the, you know, most intense period of, of the COVID pandemic. So it is not including the East Millinocket Police Department. I believe they would have been included with the stipends that were given from the town of East Millinocket, though we do appreciate them for their service. The police included in this budget were town employees at the time of the pandemic.
Any other public comment?
Hi there, Diana Furakawa, three forty-six Knob Scott Avenue. I just wanted to thank you all for your support of the, of using some of the ARPA money for mobilized Katadon. I don't want to preach the choir, but in a sense, just for the public's sake, mobilized Katadon is a program of the Millinocket Memorial Library that was formed in early twenty twenty in collaboration with Brian Knob Scott. And we offer stopgap direct aid to people experiencing all kinds of needs, from rent assistance to heating fuel, to food, transportation, things like that. And we, I just want to emphasize that we have a lot of policies and procedures in place to make sure that this goes smoothly and professionally. We're not, you know, handing out cash to individuals. We work directly with the power companies, with the heating fuel companies, to pay them directly. So that's how that process works. Last year, we saw an intense need. We delivered about twenty-five thousand dollars of support to eighty households, eighty-six percent of which were in Millinocket itself. And given the inflation this year, we are anticipating that to increase. So this will make a huge difference for people right in this community. And I appreciate you acknowledging that. I think our program is really in alignment with what ARPA funds are supposed to be used for. And so, thank you again. And I'm really open to any questions. We want to be transparent about this whole process. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Tom Melvin, seventy-three School Street, Fire Chief, Public Safety Officer. I want to thank you for moving ahead on this. Been a long process with these ARPA funds. But hey, Diane, I think we're using the needs for what they meant. And I want to thank you for thinking of the town employees. They've had a rough time. And they're still in it. We're still in the middle of this. We're, we're far from getting out of it. We, we were up today numerous times, and we hauled at least three that were local deposits. So it's still a wrap. And so I just want to say thank you for all the town employees.
Counselor Pratt.
Mr. Chairman. Tom, we had, during the budget, we had discussed about prep for potential of another pandemic.
Yes, sir.
Did, did we fund that in the budget, budget going forward, or is that something that we should be looking at for the, the additional funds that we have?
We were, at the time, you told us, you told me that we would take that from ARPA funds when we got around to doing something.
That was about ten thousand.
I still heard that, that we put, whatever you think is right, I think we need to start a public safety fund for health and safety in case of another pandemic. We know there's going to be something else. We just don't know what or when.
I appreciate you saying that. What we as a council might assume, but you're the one that's in that field. I think it would be good for you to give us some parameters as to what potentially you might need, so we can take into consideration as to how we assist the public health and the public safety of the community. So your expertise would be valuable in a recommendation to us.
I had initially recommended twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars in the fund that we were used. I mean, we're well stocked right now. I was very fortunate to be able to do some things with, with some organizations and find some stuff that the state had, and, and picked up, and through the Healthy Maine grant that we got, we were able to give some stuff. But I still think that we need to put, I'm saying twenty thousand dollars into a fund that we use as we need to, to buy. When we need, you know, when, when, when we get hit with this, you have to turn around and buy quick, and be hunting for money then to try to do it. That is, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. If I'm not mistaken, me and Counselor Danforth had a discussion earlier. The funds have to be expended, correct? Now, not saying that I'm opposed to having an emergency fund. I'm definitely in favor of it, but these particular funds have to be expended on something, correct?
To my understanding, that they have to be expended by twenty-six, twenty twenty-six. So, okay. So if we did create that fund, as long as they were extended by that, we had a plan to extend it by then. So yeah, yes, we did have that conversation.
Assuming that there is another pandemic by twenty-six, or some kind of emergency. That being said, I would definitely like to see an emergency fund in some way, shape, or form. I'd like to talk about it more in the future. Any other more public, oh, Counselor Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just want to go ahead. I know we always talk about, you know, our, our staff that we have, and we talk about public works, we talk about, you know, all the others. During the pandemic, there was a group of individuals, I don't think we could have done without, and that's the people at the transfer site. They kept it open. They made sure that everything worked, that everything was there every day, so that people could try to do something, at least in their lives, even during a pandemic that was normal. That wasn't out of the ordinary, that didn't have to go ahead. And they put themselves out there, and they also, you know, a lot of communication with the public and everything else. So people at the transfer site, I also want to mention the airport, because that place stayed open. They still had people flying in and out. They dealt with people, more so probably than any other department, I would think. The airport dealt with people from out of town and out of the community more than anybody else, and they did it during the pandemic, and they did an excellent job. So I just want to, you know, I know we emphasize a lot of this, but I, those two departments in town, I just want to give a big thank you to also in this, because I think they did a great job during the pandemic. And time and time again, I think they're kind of overlooked as far as we, we give out our gratitude and thanks, but it's much appreciated.
Thank you, Counselor Mador. I think Jeff's numbers at the airport speaks for itself when you say that. As Jeff had a conversation with me, people came up here to escape COVID, which unfortunately, it was here anyway. But again, thank you to everybody who was involved during the pandemic. Any other public comment? Diana.
Diana Lakefield, Town Clerk. I want to go on what Counselor Mador was saying. Election workers, they're not in this packet. They really should be considered at some point. They volunteered their time, although it was paid. We were first in line at the election, handling all the election equipment. I had four extra on staff just cleaning pens. And I mean, it was, it was an extensive process. So just in consideration, if this is revisited, they are part-time employees that I noticed that were not considered for this round. So it was, it was a big deal for them to, a lot of them did not work, and I had to recruit, which one of them works now for the town office. So, yeah, so just putting that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, not all heroes wear capes, and that's a perfect sample. Any other public comments? Seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor? Six zero. Counselor Danforth, can I have you read order number two nineteen dash twenty twenty two?
Order number two nineteen dash twenty twenty two, providing for approval to expend three hundred dollars from the events committee budget. Whereas the PTO will be hosting an event to give free supplies to the students and parents in our community, whereas the events committee wants to donate three hundred dollars to buy food and supplies to help with the event. It is ordered that the town manager has permission to expend three hundred dollars to the PTO to buy food and supplies from account E one-one-zero-six dash seven-zero-one-two, leaving a remaining balance of- E one one zero six dash seven zero one two, leaving a remaining balance of nine thousand seven hundred dollars.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Midor. Before I move on to the other counselors, being the head of the events committee, Amber is not here to talk about it more tonight, but this is an awesome event for those who are unaware. They are going to be giving one hundred percent free supplies away to students and parents in the community for their kids to go to school. Again, everything is free. They have a huge amount of supplies. I encourage every student or parent that needs supplies to go to this event, and there'll be food. So council comment, Councilor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know it doesn't say on here as I read it, but this is to be held at the fire station with the extreme, yeah, contribution of the fire chief and his staff, correct? There, they'll be manning the barbecue potentially. Maybe he wants to speak to it.
Tommy, I want to talk about your barbecue. Well, he's going to be barbecuing.
Just, yeah, when when Amber asked me about this, she said, I like that the PTO would like to do it nice. Well, we want to be involved. I don't care what, how, or what. But then we brainstormed it, and we thought we'll put all the fire trucks out, put some tables inside, get them in there, get tickets up, we'll go around and pick out what they want, small supplies, have hot dogs, drinks, and Cool Pops, and let's have a great time to get a picture of the fire truck to the firemen.
Thank you so much. And thanks to Jeff for donating the Cool Pops. Again, everything is completely free. Everything is completely free. I encourage anybody that needs any kind of supplies for their kids to please go to this event. Any other council comment?
Have we given the actual reminder of the date and time?
And you have a I wrote, I wrote this order last minute. It was kind of a fast thing.
On the twentieth?
Twentieth?
Saturday, the twentieth, eleven to two.
Okay, Saturday, the twentieth, eleven to two, free stuff and food. Any public comment?
Elizabeth Bragden, ninety-two Lincoln Street. I just want to mouth off what you said, Mr. Bragden. I highly recommend parents and kids come because I understand that things this year are a little expensive. And if the public could spread the word, that way we can provide to of the larger amount of the community. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none. Back to the council. All those in favor? Six zero. Moving on to reports and communication, warrant committee for August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two will be myself and Chair Golebe. Any chair committee reports? Councilor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have an age-friendly Millinocket Committee meeting on Tuesday, August sixteenth. That will be held at the library. There's also a Zoom link, and that information is posted on the website, on the town website. I do want to mention, we've been working with the main council on aging. Their M-dash project, and M-dash stands for the Municipal Data Across Sectors for Health. I know that probably doesn't mean a lot when I say that, but I'm going to invite members of the main council on aging. We're almost done gathering our local data, and it is just, I don't want to say impressive, it is, that's the word that comes to mind, but it's comprehensive, but it's stark. I mean, just the information that they've gathered for us really tells the story of our community. And so I want to make sure there's a presentation, and I'll make sure they come to the council for that company. So stay tuned for more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other chair committee reports? Councilor Midor?
It's not a chair committee report, but I would like to go ahead and tell the people or remind the people of Millinocket that there is a new program out there for people sixty-five and over who have lived in their homes in the community for over ten years, that they can now go ahead and apply to freeze their taxes. It's a, it's a yearly thing that you have to apply for, but certainly if you are sixty-five and over, you've lived in your home for more than ten years that you own, you can apply to have your taxes frozen at this year's rate and move along that way further along as far as being able to do this year after year. So I encourage anybody in a, in an older community like ours to take full advantage of it. The applications can be had at the town office, either from the town clerk, and I believe our assessor even has some of the application to be able to give out. So certainly, if you are looking to get, it's not necessarily tax relief, but it is ability to freeze your taxes from future increases. I would encourage you to do so, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilor.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Midor. Councilor Breck.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the freeze will be based upon after this year's tax bills go out. So it will be the subsequent year that you get the credit.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. Events committee will be meeting on the thirtieth on Tuesday at the airport. Thank you to Jeff for hosting us. Yes.
The only thing I want to say is you have to have homestead for ten years, not necessarily in the house you're in now, and not necessarily even in Millinocket. That's what the state of Maine today.
Perfect. For those of those that were not aware, it was homestead for ten years, and not necessarily in Millinocket. It's the entire state of Maine. The events committee will be meeting on Tuesday the thirtieth at the airport. Thanks again to Jeff for hosting us. We will be talking about the five K Great Pumpkin Run for next year, the flying cruising, and we will be talking about some winter events that we're looking to do. So I encourage everybody to come out in time. I will be sending that agenda out tomorrow afternoon. Any other chair, many reports? Jeff?
Jeff Campbell, Airport Manager. I'm not a chair committee or anything like that, but I'd like to give you guys an update on the rehabilitation project going on at the airport. During the budget session, you guys approved the repainting of one and a half hangars and two fuel houses. During the pressure washing and and cleaning and preparation for paint on both of the fuel houses, a significant amount of rot was found. And our contractor has agreed to fix the necessary wood, the trim on the wood, and and two doors were replaced today on the jet fuel house. So that work is commencing, and they should start getting paint put on them within another week. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to two-minute public comment. Do we have any public comments? John Raymond.
Thank you, Chair, interim Chair Bragden. I couldn't make the full meeting because I was on another Zoom meeting earlier, but I dropped in on this one. And the reason I'm dropping in and making this comment is because I hope you've seen the announcement that Governor King and no, not Governor, excuse me, Senator King and Senator Collins made about the looking to expand the Woods and Water Monument. That will be very, very detrimental to the connection we're trying to make to East Millinocket. I need to let you guys know this before you start supporting it, like the chamber and some of the other people in town. It's going to shut that down. And we're trying to work through this, but until we get some type of an agreement with them or the landowner or something, if if this happens to go through, that will take care of the seven years of work that I've just done. So I think you need to know it. Snowmobiling and ATVing is one point three six billion dollars with a B in the state of Maine. Six hundred and five million for snowmobiling and seven hundred and fifty-four for ATVing. Last year, they had an increase for this year in ATV of twenty-five dollars per registration, and the director, Brian Bronson, thought it was probably going to hamper some of the registrations, but it did just the opposite. The month of June was the largest month ever for registrations for one month time. It was over thirty thousand registered. And right now, as of last year, there were eighty-eight thousand sleds registered in the state of Maine and eighty-three thousand ATVs. We had an increase of over ten thousand from the year before. And the present numbers haven't come out yet, but I would be willing to bet we're probably going to surpass sliding. So if we don't be careful here, we're going to shut us down for what could be something very big in the area. So just wanted to bring this up at this time, and we can work on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Just a quick question. Will this impact the project that you've been working on that we had discussions about previous months?
Yes, this is the 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 seven-year project that I've had, trying to make the connection to East Millinocket. This will shut it down.
Any, any other public comment? Seeing none, I seek a motion to end the meeting.
No move.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Midor. All those in favor? Six here, we are now adjourned.